My name is Jennifer Pruitt. I'm calling this meeting of the Water Quality Control Commission on November 10th to order. I see a lot of people have already gotten in on the. I would like the commission administrator to call the roll to see if we have a quorum. Kirk Patton and Krista McWilliams notified us they would not be able to attend this meeting, but I still think we do have a quorum here. And after the administrator calls the roll, I would like to ask that any call-in members, please identify themselves so we have a good record of who's at this meeting. So Ms. Jones, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. I will start the roll call with Commissioner Condalaria. Commissioner Surtin.
Here.
Commissioner Cornwell. Commissioner Cornwell? Okay, I'll circle back. Commissioner Dominguez.
Here.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Here.
Commissioner Muscha Rafi.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Cypher.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Timmons. Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Let me go back and ask, has Commissioner Cornwell joined us? Okay, and Commissioner, Chair Pruitt.
I'm here. And I think it would be also good to just call for Commissioner Patton and Commissioner McWilliams, just in case their plans change and they were able to call in or.
Okay. Commissioner McWilliams, have you joined us? Commissioner Patton, have you joined us? Hearing no response from either of them. Madam Chair, I think you have a quorum. You do.
Thank you, Pam.
Yes, you have 10.
I do see that we have a call-in user number four that's showing up on my screen. Would the call-in user please identify yourself? I'm not really very comfortable with some in the meeting who's not identified. So this could be someone who's on video but also called in on their phone to listen. Is there anybody that fits that description? I'm going to have to ask the administrator to expel the call-in user if the call-in user is not willing to identify themselves. So I'll give you a few more minutes. Please identify yourself, call-in user. It says, the screen reads, "Call-in user four," but I'm only seeing one call-in user on this WebEx meeting. Pam, why don't you go ahead and expel that person who will not identify themselves? All right, first on our agenda is approval of the agenda. So I need a motion and a second for the agenda that I hope everyone received in advance and was posted on our website.
Madam Chair.
Approval of the agenda.
I second that, Dave Cypher.
Thank you, Commissioners. Do we have any discussion about the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, would you call a roll call vote on that, please, Ms. Jones?
Yes. Commissioner Condalaria.
Yes.
Commissioner Surtin.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornwell, have you joined us? Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams, have you joined us? Commissioner Muscha Rafi.
Here. If I may something, it happened to be I was the one who was unidentified on the previous call when Madam Chair was calling for that. I don't know how this happened. It seems I called them twice at the same time. So I called back, I hung up, and I called back again. Madam Chair, do you, sorry for the interruption. I'll explain that after you finish that roll count.
Commissioner Muscha Rafi, how do you vote on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Patton, have you joined us? Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Thompson. I think you, you show that you're muted, Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Chair Pruitt.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the approval of the agenda is unanimous.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Muscha Rafi, for explaining. And I'm glad you're here, and I apologize for asking to have you expelled the first time. I just want to be very careful with the security of our meeting and make sure we know who's in it. So thank you for letting us know it's you, and I'm really glad you could join us this morning. Next on our agenda. Next on our agenda, number three, approval of the meeting minutes from the October 13th meeting. Those were sent to all the Commissioners. I had already reviewed them in advance, so I will entertain a motion on those.
This is Howard, I move to approve.
This is Gabriel Wade, I second.
Was that Commissioner Wade seconding?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, any discussion of the minutes? All right, seeing and hearing none. Ms. Jones, again, would you please call a roll call vote for approval of the meeting minutes from the October 13 meeting?
Commissioner Condalaria, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Surtin.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornwell. Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams. Commissioner Muscha Rafi.
Yes.
Commissioner Patton. Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Chair Pruitt.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the vote passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you for doing such a nice, clear job with those minutes. Item number four on our agenda is public comment, and this is the time when we open up the floor to any member of the public that would like to convey some general piece of information or comment to the commission. According to our rules and procedure, they should not be specific to a particular item on our agenda or docket. It is in the nature of general public comment. So because this is a virtual meeting and I can't see everybody, I will just ask if there is anyone in this meeting that would like to make public comment today, and I will just need you to speak up and identify yourself if anyone would like to do that this morning. Having given that a couple of minutes there, I think, and having not heard any requests for public comment, I will have to assume there is no requested public comment today. So we will move to number five on our agenda, which is request to schedule approval of the 2020, 2022 State of Section 303D and Section 305B Integrated Report, which is WQCC number 20-66. This report is on the WQCC website in addition to a presentation from the NMED Surface Water Quality. And I understand this morning, I see, good morning, John Verheul, Counsel for the New Mexico Environment Department, and I think Lynette Guevara and Chris Barrios from the Surface Water Quality Bureau are here. So would you all please present your scheduling requests to the commission for consideration?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. You've taken care of my introductions for me, so I won't repeat them. But indeed, Lynette Guevara and Chris Barrios from the NMED Surface Water Quality Bureau are here with me in case there's any specific questions. We're before you today to request a hearing at your next meeting, your December meeting, for approval of the Clean Water Act, Section 303D, 305B Integrated Report. This is a planning document that is required by the Federal Clean Water Act and by EPA for the state to submit every two years. And while there is no requirement for it in state law, the commission is the state water pollution control agency for this state for all purposes of the Federal Clean Water Act pursuant to the State Water Quality Act. And so that is why we're requesting that this commission review the integrated list and report and consider it for approval at their next meeting. The entire list and report was filed well prior to this meeting. It's up on the WQCC docket on the website, in addition to a presentation that the Surface Water Quality Bureau plans to walk through with the commission at its next meeting to introduce it and provide a framework and really present it prior to sitting for questions and potential commission deliberation. With that, I would ask, Madam Chair, if you or any members of the commission have any other questions about this matter?
Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Verheul or Surface Water Quality Bureau staff? And if there aren't any questions, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Howard. I move that we grant the motion to consider the report at our next December meeting.
Second, Larry Dominguez.
So we have a motion and a second for the commission to hear this matter at our December 8th meeting. Are there any additional questions or comments from Commissioners? All right. Madam Administrator, would you please call a roll call vote on this?
Yes. Commissioner Condalaria, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Surtin.
Yes.
Commissioner Cornwell. Commissioner Dominguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Hutchinson.
Yes.
Commissioner McWilliams. Commissioner Muscha Rafi.
Yes.
Commissioner Patton. Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Cypher.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Chair Pruitt.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. So we will hear this matter at our December 8th meeting. Thank you, John and Surface Water.
Thank you.
So number six on our agenda is a discussion about possible rulemaking for miscellaneous matters that come before the commission that are not rulemaking or adjudicatory matters per interest in our procedural rules, which are 20.1.3 and MAC and 20.1.6 and that. This is, this is kind of my request in order to create a transparent process with known timelines from petition through commission approval or rejection. And I would say that the last matter on our agenda is a classic example of why I would like to see some rules for this. What is on our website is a 501-page report, and when it came in, the commission administrator said, "How do I stamp this? What is this?" And if for any member of the public not familiar with the Clean Water Act, what 303 or 305 Integrated Report or list are, looking at that document, it's a 501-page document, and until you get pretty well through the executive summary, which isn't all that short either, you can't really tell why that's on the docket or what the commission is asked to do or in what timeframe or under what authority. Reading through the PowerPoint presentation kind of outlines that, but I'm concerned that that puts a burden on the public. That doesn't really help the public understand what these things are, what the commission's being asked to do, or how the public could participate in the process. Now, I know that because I work for the New Mexico Environment Department, and I know the Surface Water Quality Bureau as part of working through the preparation of this report has a number of public meetings and does some public outreach and notice on the drafts and pieces of the report as it's put together. That does not change the fact that approval is now before, going to be before the commission, and there might be some member of the public that pays attention to commission meetings and missed some of the earlier outreach and now is interested and wants to understand and perhaps comment on the report or the process. I think every matter that comes to the commission for approval, adoption, et cetera, should get a docket number and should have a process by which it comes in with some kind of a request, a petition or a request for approval with the attachment of whatever it is being that's being requested to be reviewed or approved. And then, those items are available to the public and on the commission website for some reasonable period of time until a scheduled meeting when the matter is on the commission's agenda for approval or adoption. This, there was some similar confusion about this for the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuous Planning Process. Of course, as we and the administrator all become more experienced, we get to the point, and you know, experienced Commissioners who are already on the commission know exactly what these documents are. But staff changes and members of the public are not going to always know what these documents are. So what I would like to do, I have Gregory Chakalian, who is our new Administrative Law Judiciary Hearing Officer, leading the Office of Public Facilitation. He's on this call, and I have talked to Gregory about this and about perhaps at our next meeting presenting a proposal and a timeline to put something together for the commission to consider in this area. The goal is to have a clear, consistent, predictable process that is transparent for the public, for the Commissioners, and for parties that want to ask us to do something. And I would like to balance that with, without, I seek to avoid a super complicated, burdensome administrative process on the department or the requesting party. So I don't think that this needs to be quite as formal as our adjudicatory or rulemaking processes are. I think those could be used as guidance, and I think there are other rules under the State Rules Act that could be used as guidance. Mr. Chakalian is a very experienced and intelligent lawyer who I believe could synthesize these and can work with interested parties that might want to contribute ideas or drafts. So that's my request and my idea. And I would like to hear from other Commissioners first, and I will certainly give members of the public or interested parties who are in this meeting an opportunity to comment on this as well, once we've heard a little bit from Commissioners. And if the commission does decide to move forward, we would need to make, I think, a request to Mr. Chakalian to bring us something in the future. So Commissioners, reactions, comments, questions?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Timmons. My, I guess, just to clarify, can you lay out particular regular items that this would apply to so that we have kind of like a recipe laid out for, you know, it's the one we just heard about and a couple others that come up every two years or every five years, just so that we have a list of which items specifically that these rules would apply to? Is that what you're thinking?
Commissioner Timmons, and maybe I'll ask John Verheul to help me with this, too. I don't want this to be so limited that it wouldn't apply to something we haven't thought of, but kind of what has come to my mind is these kind of Clean Water Act items and other items where the commission is the designated decider under the Water Quality Act for these matters under the Federal Clean Water Act, but none of those have an actual process for those decisional items to come before the commission. And that's what I'm trying to establish here. So things like I just mentioned, as well as, say, TMDLs, sometimes those are rulemaking, sometimes those don't seem to be. And John, do you want to help me with this, with any other items you think would fall under this umbrella?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to, thank you. You've mentioned the Surface Water Quality Planning Documents. We just discussed in the prior agenda item, the 303, 305 Integrated List and Report, that is one of them. All of the TMDLs are such documents. None of them are rulemakings because none of them are codified in the New Mexico Administrative Code. Certainly, the Water Quality Management Plan and Continuing Planning Process is an example of those, as is the Non-Point Source Management Program. So that's at least four different types of planning documents from the NMED Surface Water Quality Bureau. There is also at least one item, I believe you approve rate settings for the Construction Programs Bureau, which may or may not fall into the miscellaneous items bucket, if you will. Those are the, those are the types of items that we have identified so far within NMED. We have not reached out to EMNERD or to Game &amp; Fish, for example, as additional constituent agencies to this commission to see if they have any matters that could potentially fall into that bucket or that they would want more process for. So there is potentially a larger universe.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Mr. Verheul. I think that definitely answers my question. I would also just throw out there, out of curiosity, it seems that we have this process of requesting a hearing and then a month later or sometime later, having the hearing of whatever the decision is. If it's possible to explore through this, kind of laying out general guidelines, is it within the realm of possibilities to just put it on the agenda and do it? Or does it have to go through a request and then come up for hearing later? Is there a way to make that a more efficient, timely process?
Well, that's kind of what we would, the hearing officer, to look at, looking at other notice and rulemaking or decisional kinds of procedural processes. If it simply goes on the agenda and there is only a short period of time before receiving the presentation and whatever it is, the matter requested for decision, my concern is that sometimes we have gotten the request, not as a request, just a very large planning document or report 10 days to two weeks before a commission meeting, and we've gotten a presentation only several days before the meeting. And I don't feel like that provides a meaningful opportunity for members of the public to review or participate or make public comment in the process or the review or the commission's decision. In the matter we just discussed, number five on the agenda, I want to distinguish that that has been on the docket for well over a month, and the presentation has been there for quite a while. But because we didn't have any process to set that up, and we didn't have anything that was really clearly identifiable to the public on the docket as a request for approval, I wanted to make sure we had a two-step process. And I will tell you that, and I think Commissioners Dominguez and Hutchinson and Surtin and Commissioners who have been on the commission for a long time can verify that the commission has gone back and forth about putting these with formal docket numbers, sometimes under other commissioners. Sometimes, under other commissions and administrators, there have sometimes been periods when these have not gotten docket numbers. And so I'm trying to establish something consistent and lasting that both for the parties wanting a decision or approval and also for the public that might want to participate.
Madam Chair, this is Larry Dominguez. So to add to what Commissioner Timmons has started with. And not to sound like I'm mudding the water, these are some questions I'll throw out to to maybe help with the discussion process. I fully understand what you're getting at here and having something that's formalized and transparent. But I guess the first question, correct? This would actually turn into a rulemaking, is that correct?
The commission would adopt rules in a rulemaking subject to 20.1.6 for adoption, yes.
Okay. I spent quite a bit of time going through a rulemaking rule. And so the next question I would have is who would be the petitioning party to this? Now, I understand that you've got, you generated the idea and got the ball rolling on this as a starting point. But my concern lies with, if you like, the 20.1.6.7. The commission cannot be a petitioning party to the commission. And so I'm in a bit of a quandary of who the petitioning party would be. And my reasoning for bringing that up is I also don't want the public to view this process as being, well, the commission's come up with this idea and they petition themselves and it looks like a very much top-down decision on this. So this is more of a procedural question of just getting from point A to point B. And I don't mean to complicate the process, but I also want to make sure that the commission is, does not get into a legal quandary there or upset the apple cart by just the process that we're trying to put into place.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I don't know if Mr. Chakalian or Mr. Verheul wants to speak to that, but I believe the two of them have been having conversations about the department being the possible petitioner.
This is Gregory Chakalian. Good morning, Commissioners and Board Chair. I have been speaking with John and another attorney in the Surface Water Bureau. And, you know, as the Hearing Officer that may be assigned to this rulemaking, I'd like to try to stay as objective and neutral as possible. I've enjoyed also helping get this ball rolling. But I'll let John take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chakalian. Well, the first thing I'd like to say is, you know, the Surface Water Quality Bureau, who I've been representing for some of these matters now over the last several months, certainly understands the desire for transparency and the need to have these things provided to the public with context far enough ahead of time such that they can digest them and fully participate in the process, should they wish to do so. And we understand that the, we'll call it the two-step process, which Commissioner Timmons discussed. That was a little bit of a, perhaps, an interim solution to cure that in the short term. And we're now talking about doing something in the longer term. My understanding, and this pertains to Commissioner Dominguez's comments, my understanding is probably the most appropriate way to do that certainly is via a rulemaking pursuant to 20.1.6 and MAC, the commission's rulemaking procedures, and implement new procedural regulations for these types of matters. And then, again, as I discussed earlier, the question is exactly which types of documents do they pertain to? Is it only surface water documents? Is it only NMED documents? Is it all documents from other constituent agencies? That's a question we don't really have an answer to yet. I would add, however, that with respect to providing advance notice, it would certainly not be unreasonable to cure the existing issue of transparency and participation by the public by simply requiring submission of documents some amount of time earlier than they had been previously. And by previously, I mean in past years prior to the two-step process. And to provide some level of context be provided along with them, whether that is a simple notice of intent or petition or what have you. I think if there is any entity within NMED that wishes to, well, I'll go back. Within 20.1.6, any person may petition the commission for a rulemaking. And then certainly that becomes a public process in and of itself. So any person, any stakeholder, any constituent agency that wishes to participate in drafting, petitioning for and participating in the rulemaking for adoption of those procedural rules may do so. I don't know if we have a decision yet within NMED as to which bureau and/or bureaus might be the petitioning party for that matter. Rebecca Ruse is the Director of the Water Protection Division, and she is on this meeting at this time. And if it's okay, Madam Chair, I would invite her comments as to that.
Certainly. Thank you. Director Ruse?
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate everything that John Verheul just offered in terms of some of the thinking up to this point. This is still very preliminary. I want to say that we were really, and the division and the bureau and with our counsel, interested to see and listen to the discussion among commissioners on this agenda topic today to get a better handle of what the objectives are, what any direction would be coming out of this meeting. I think that, well, the devil's in the details. We'll have more to sort through as a follow-up to today's meeting. And I do want to be sensitive to a couple of things. One, you know, as we do any follow-up to today's commission discussion on this topic, one is along the lines of something John mentioned once or twice, which is that we have yet unexplored other constituent agencies that might have some of these miscellaneous matters that don't currently have established procedures. We'll do explore that subsequent to this discussion unless representatives of those agencies are here today and want to weigh in. Then we welcome that as well. Second thing is, depending on what comes out of this, who the petitioning party might be, whether that be one of the water bureaus at NMED, whether it be the division, the Water Protection Division, or some other entity, well, we'll need to work out more details in terms of resource availability, the capacity to staff and develop a petition for rulemaking at this time or in the near future. So again, not sure how helpful that is, but just want to let you know some of the things that I'm thinking about as we listen to this discussion and hear more of the questions and interests of the various commissioners and the chair. And I'm happy to try and answer other questions that are relevant to my role in the Water Protection Division as the discussion continues this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ruse. Commissioner Dominguez, did you have any additional comments or questions or?
Sure. Since we got the ball rolling and everybody else seems to be awfully quiet. Having been one of those that's been around the block a few times or kind of long in the tooth or however you previously described those of us that gave up on having dark-colored hair, hair, period. I'm I'm fully familiar with some of the challenges of getting things on the agenda or docketing items. Some of those have always been a little bit of a juggling act. I think we've always made things work and got through the process. But I do understand the concept of having something in place that streamlines processing. A couple of the items that I jotted down that I see as potential challenges with this is because it's being looked at, not specific items, but a very generic, broad-scope rule to capture anything that isn't already established within adjudicatory rulemaking. The concept sounds simple, but when you get that broad of a scope, it may be a little bit of a challenge in writing some of this to capture everything but then not creating problems by doing that. On the flip side, one of the other things I think we need to take into account is building in some flexibility because there are times that things get brought before the commission that are time-sensitive, that may have to be put on the agenda or docteted and taken care of in an expedited manner because of the time sensitivity of that. So that may also be a bit of a challenge to building that flexibility into a rulemaking where you're trying to provide transparency and timelines. Yeah, how do we take into account those more emergency situations where something has to be taken care of due to the nature of it? And how do we build that into a rule? So those are just a few items that come to my mind. And I just throw those out not for trying to create the answer right now, but to just throw them out there for the thinking process as this moves forward. That's all I have for the moment, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. It's, I appreciate having your perspective and those additional considerations. Any other commissioners have comments or questions they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, this is Howard.
Commissioner Hutchinson?
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Dominguez's description of us with several descriptors. We have in the past run into this situation where Commissioners, the Chair, our legal counsel has voiced concerns over having items on the agenda that don't have a rule that is set behind them as far as publishing them in the agenda and then acting on them. I'm sure Commissioner Dominguez can remember several discussions where the item was on the agenda and then there was question if we were going to allow public comment concerning the agenda item and whether or not that was appropriate. And so I might want to throw that out as another consideration as we're looking at the rulemaking process as to whether or not these particular items will have allowance for public comment on the issue. And that's all I would maybe throw in. And I agree with Commissioner Dominguez's assessment and ideas as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Hutchinson. I certainly agree. Describing and framing the opportunities for public comment or public participation in these items, I think would be an important part of to consider and address in this concept if it moves forward. So, other commissioners? Or I wonder, Council Sanchez, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to bring to this discussion?
Madam? No, I don't. You and I have talked about this particular item or matter several times, and I think you've fairly characterized the concerns that I share with you. I think the discussion, the comments from Commissioner Dominguez and Commissioner Hutchinson will certainly inform Mr. Chakalian as he goes forward, if he goes forward. Just briefly, I think some of these questions or issues will work themselves through in the process of drafting the rule, having various drafts for review for consideration. And perhaps one of the initial questions, looking at 20.1.3, which very specifically in the scope of the rule says, these are the particular items that are subject or under the jurisdiction of this particular rule. I don't know that we would necessarily have to do that or that the rule that's being discussed would necessarily have to do that. Rather than an inclusive or exhaustive list, it may well be that it could refer to matters that come within the commission or before the commission, rather, for consideration that are not within the scope of either 20.1.3 or 20.1.6. And that way, we wouldn't have to envision every single instance where there might be a matter that comes within the scope of the proposed rule. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Sanchez, for those thoughts. So I'll just ask one last time if any other commissioners want to make any comments or ask any questions. And after that, I'll see if there are any members of the public or anybody other than commissioners in this meeting that would like to ask a question or make some comments. So first, final call for commissioners.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Timmons again. I just personally would support the idea that Mr. Verheul suggested about having materials posted well in advance and probably online and various formats so the public can see without having to do without having to do a I think that that would be, to me, more appealing and provide the time that I would need to review materials. So I would support that idea if it's an option here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Timmons. And I think all options are on the table here. And I certainly look forward to hearing recommendations about the items, the options that address our goals of transparency and at the same time balance that with minimal administrative burden. And one step or two step, I think we are all open to considering all options. I know I am. So any other Commission comments or questions? All right. Are there any members of the public or other agencies or anyone else in this meeting that would like to make a comment or ask a question?
Madam Chair, would that include NMED?
Of course.
All right. I appreciate your calling on me previously, but hearing no one else jump right in. I wonder, getting to Director Ruse's point about resource considerations and Commissioner Timmons's point that she just made about an expedient way to cure the defects in the current process, I wonder if a middle ground might be a standard operating procedure-type document, an SOP, potentially developed by the hearing officer with input from whichever bureaus within the Environment Department have such documents and potentially also with input from other agencies who may have such matters as appropriate. Is that something perhaps the Commission could consider in lieu of a rulemaking in order to codify these procedural regulations?
I guess I'd want to hear from Counsel on this, but I will tell you that the prior Commission Administrator and I had a lot of trouble in our first year procedurally with this Commission, getting things done in advance and submitted in advance. And this is why I'm looking at this idea. I'm not sure if the Commission adopted an SOP, that we could impose that SOP on parties outside the Office of Public Facilitation or the department. My understanding of State Rules Act is when something affects people outside of your work unit and agency, it has to be considered a rule, not an SOP. And I think that's what we're talking about. And that, I wonder if Counsel Sanchez has any advice on that? That kind of seems like a legal question to me, and maybe that's the first thing we want to ask Counsel Sanchez or Mr. Chikolayantolagintu. I don't know.
Madam Chair, this is Counsel Sanchez. Your recollection of the definition of a rule under the State Rules Act is essentially correct. I'm looking at 14.4.2 subsection F, and it defines a rule as "any rule, regulation, or standard, including those explicitly implicitly implementing or interpreting a federal state legal statute or applicable rule and amendment issued or promulgated by the agency, but in part affecting persons, not members or employees of an issuing agency, including affected persons served by the agency." And basically, so in any you characterize it, if you're implementing a procedure that has this effect, I think the ambit of the definition of a rule and would be, I think, that would be my concern about just going with a standard operating procedure document. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel. And looking back on the matters we've had before us in the last year and a half or almost two years when I chaired the Commission, I can think of at least one TMDL or, I don't know, maybe it was a standards deviation, but it was actually filed by an outside party, Peabody Cole, with the participation of the Surface Water Bureau, but it was not the Bureau that actually filed the petition. So I think there could be requests that might fall under this procedure that could be filed by parties other than the department. And that's why I do think, that's why I'm thinking it has to be a rule rather than an SOP. But any other thoughts? Mr. Verheul?
No, Madam Chair. In prior discussions, we certainly had identified what you and Counselor Sanchez just brought up, that an SOP would not have the force of law, and you'd really only be able to impose it on NMED bureaus, which I think are the majority of these such matters. But again, you're correct, there is the occasional exception to that.
All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to add to this discussion, Mr. Verheul?
Only that with the resource constraints within the department right now, which I know you're aware of, doing a full-blown rulemaking is burdensome at this time, which is why we were interested in the potential middle ground of an SOP with its obvious disadvantages, as we just discussed. The only other thing I'd like to point out is, and I know you hear about these every time the Surface Water Quality Bureau is before the Commission with any one of their various planning documents. But the Surface Water Quality Bureau already conducts an extensive public participation process as mandated by the Clean Water Act before they even bring these planning documents before the Commission. So there may be opportunities to leverage some of the public process and public participation that they have already conducted when formulating these procedures. Just acknowledging that that's already occurred, and the public has, in many cases, participated in a public meeting, had the opportunity to review a draft and submit public comment, had the opportunity to ask questions of the Bureau. And that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, you know, with the NMED or any other agency or any member of the public, any non-Water Quality Control Commission Commissioner that would like to ask a question or make a comment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, this is Jessica Fulham, Duckers Water Quality Bureau.
Yes, Ms. Fulham.
Yes. Madam, I think you are correct that we do have the opportunity for third-party entities to bring items before the Commission at their convenience or be put on the agenda. I just wanted to clarify for the Commission and members that are attending, Peabody was actually a rulemaking for a Designated Use Amendment, and TMDLs are actually part of the WQMP CPP. So if we develop rules, it would be good to incorporate TMDLs as part of the WQMP process. And that's all I needed to add.
Thank you, Ms. Fulham, for clarifying that. I was kind of struggling to remember what the context of that Peabody one was. So I appreciate you making that clear for the Commission. Any other comments or questions? Any direction or or wrap-up from the Commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dominguez?
Yes. Based on that, the prior discussion and looking at the whole process of rulemaking, length of time to do that, and where we are in the current year coming up on legislative session and everything else that the Commission has on the docket even shortly after the legislative session. At best, if the Commission was going to undertake this, it's a ways down the road, most likely. Considering that a majority of the items that are kind of in that gray area do come from Environment Department, at least for an interim basis, it may be prudent to have some basic SOP for the Office of Public Facilitation just to handle these matters, assuming that we even go with rulemaking into the latter part of next year. That way, there's something in place just to keep the wheels on. And so there may be some merit to an SOP. Just giving a quick glance at the calendar to do rulemaking, I would think that you're really pushing that into the latter part of next year, mid the latter part of next year, to even bring it before the Commission. So we're quite a ways off just under that process. So just food for thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Dominguez. I can assure you, I will accept the invitation to get an SOP done fairly promptly. Any other comments or actions by Commissioners? All right. Well, I think we're done with this one. Number seven on our agenda, next meeting and expected upcoming matters for our December 8th meeting. I don't believe we have anything on our agenda that we know of for the December meeting. We have, the Office of Public Facilitation has been advised that some bureaus might be filing some rulemaking or fee requests in December that we might be asked to do some scheduling on. But we'll just wait and see if any agenda items get requested or filed. I'm not currently aware of anything. The January meeting would be the 12th, right before the legislative session. Again, if someone wants to ask us to simply schedule something, I would probably be open to calling a January meeting. Currently, there's nothing on the agenda. But someone might want a public notice time period to run during the session to have the time to get that done so that something could be on our agenda after the session. I think the meetings, February 9th and March 9th during the legislative, we likely will not meet. And the session ends March 20th, which would mean plenty of time would elapse before the April 13th Commission meeting, so everyone would have time to prepare. And we currently have the outstanding Natural Resource Water Petition for the Upper Pecos Watershed scheduled in April. So that's just kind of a forecast ahead for you all of where we're going. If the Administrator or anybody else knows of anything else they want to mention upcoming, that would be helpful for Commissioners to know. Please feel free to speak up now.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dominguez, again. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we did just go ahead and schedule the 303D, 305B items for December 8th. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Dominguez. I apologize. Yeah. Yes. So we'll definitely meet in December, and that's on our agenda. My apologies, Mr. Verheul. Anything else, Commissioners? All right. Well, I hope everybody has a safe, I hope not too lonely Thanksgiving during these challenging times. I will now adjourn our meeting at 10:09. Thank you all who came and participated.
Thank you.